I'll call the York County Council Meeting to order. Before we begin, words cannot describe the loss that our county has had today. Four officers shot this morning. Sergeant Randy Clinton, Sergeant Buddy Brown, Detective Mike Doty, and York Police Sergeant Kyle Cummings. Our hearts are with them, our prayers are with them. If you can, we would ask that you donate to the York County Officers Fund, which is being collected at the South State Bank to help pay their medical bills and to help them as they recover. Please keep them all in your prayers, and if you would, stand with me as we do the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. In lieu of a prayer tonight, I would ask that you just bow your head and a moment of silence and pray for our officers, our state and our country.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Is there a motion?
I make a motion to amend the agenda and add Mark Van Sickle to the appearances for H-Tax presentation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. Alton Johnson, Catawba Regional Workforce; Jason Flora, Catawba Regional Workforce; Bridget Miller, Catawba Regional Workforce. Please come forward.
And also, although we're not going to swear him anything, I'd like to recognize our new CBB Director, Billy Dunlap. Nobody told him he had to be here, but he decided to come watch this. Maybe this is a good thing, this is his first council meeting, but we're glad to have you back home in York County.
Welcome. Thank you. Appearances. Mark. And do remember to give your name and address.
Mark Van Sickle, 2542 Lower Assembly Drive, Fort Mill, South Carolina. Here as the Chair of the Hospitality Tax Committee to answer any questions the council may have on the amended marketing grant application scorecard that we submitted to you guys, I believe it was in December after we finalized that as a committee. See if you had any questions on any of the changes in the language to that scorecard.
Mr. Winkler? I don't think we've seen it.
Oh, okay. I apologize. So, we changed the scorecard to further promote the use of these types of funds, appropriation to events in the unincorporated areas, which is obviously where the tax is generated. So, I guess just going down through it, the allocation criteria, we highlighted that the project should help generate more traffic to the unincorporated areas. We changed in our areas to some of the language, again, to further enhance and say, in the unincorporated areas of York County, and these are all in the guidelines for submitting the application, the first four or five of these. Talk about ways to help create better partnerships with businesses from the incorporated areas. Talks about what your project create partnerships with, for example, the CBB, OED, cultural organizations, restaurants located in the unincorporated areas of the county, and will it drive traffic to those businesses. Used to say, what other communities provide the same type of event? That part was removed. Itemize the total expected project costs. We moved that section, we moved that down to a different section. The itemized project costs should be equal to the source of funds in the following section. Guidelines for submitting the application, again, list all sources of funds. Again, we moved that down to the itemized project costs. To read the sources of the fund should equal the itemized project costs in the previous We moved organizational information, fax. People don't use fax machines anymore, so it seemed irrelevant to be in there. Project description, used to read, describe the project and its tourism mission. We added, what is your goal? What partnerships will it create? Hospitality, again, application tourism information. If there are no hotels currently located, that was removed. On the score sheet, we changed some formatting, the header and footer sections, information committee member information. Score sheet general information, we used to read, follow the guidelines through 10 points to separate categories for supporting documents for 10 points. We combined two categories for a maximum score of 15 points. On the score sheet, again, description of goals, used to read, include sections for tourism mission. It was 10 points. Community benefit, proof of partnership, was 15 points. Uniqueness, innovation, was 10 points. Comprehensive marketing plan was 10 points. Broke this section into two headers. First, the project description, which includes tourism mission, benefits to unincorporated York County for a maximum score of 25 points. Benefit proof of partnership section to a maximum score of 10 points. New project description header now has a total of 35 points. Again, under the score sheet, under marketing goals, there was no heading under the old scorecard. The section was broken out from previous header into its own category, which includes novelty innovations, new project, 10 points. Comprehensive marketing plan, 10 points. For a total maximum of 20 points. Budget information, score sheet had a grant history of five points and a complete budget of 10 points. The new scorecard, remove the grant history score, should reflect under novelty innovation, new project category above, present a complete budget as its sole category in the section for 10 maximum points. Bonus point section of the unincorporated, for, excuse me, bonus point section for proof of unincorporated area restaurant patronage for 10 points, that was removed. So, what we've really done is tried to consolidate and really focus the point scoring towards the benefit towards the unincorporated areas, which, again, that's obviously, you know, that's where this tax is generated. So, we really feel strongly that it needs to go back into those areas.
Any questions?
Will we get a copy of that?
Mr. Roddy?
Simply because it's, the event is going to be held in the unincorporated area, do they get a more favorable review versus an organization that's going to put on an event that actually falls within the city limits that may not be in the unincorporated area?
Yes. Yeah, that's the way that the score matrix has been modified, was to give greater benefit to those types of events, events in the unincorporated area.
I know, we had some, I'll skip that one. I'll say that one for later.
Any other questions?
I guess I do have one comment.
Scott?
As I understand it, the ultimate goal is to ensure that we increase the unincorporated area generation of revenue, and secondarily, to reinvest in areas that may or may not currently have something in them now. I guess here's my question. I'd like to see a red line of the previous application and the current one, which apparently we don't have yet, but also, get your thoughts on, are we still leaving room? Did you leave room to look for projects that aren't necessarily in the area where it was generated, but where there's an opportunity to generate a significant amount of unincorporated H-Tax funds?
Not sure I'm completely following you.
I guess what I heard you say previously was that you wanted, that I hear a huge emphasis placed on putting the money back where it was generated. So, if you generate it in a certain district, that we're going to push the money to that district. Is that wrong? Am I hearing that wrong?
What you're trying to get at, like, unincorporated, let's say there's going to be an event held in an area where there's never been one held. They would gauge and measure the impact that event's going to have in the incorporated area, and I would think by the simple fact it's a new event, it's going to lay up on anything else, and if it's in an unincorporated area, a further bump up on there. The emphasis was not to change to make it be, let's say, if it all comes from District 10 to put the money higher than District 10. That's not one of the necessary parameters around that. It's simply to-
Try to drive money back in the unincorporated area where hospitality tax is generated. That was one of the things that the changes was made to reflect. Am I saying that right? Yes, Kevin. Yeah, that's good. And it's not to say that we wouldn't support events that are being held in incorporated areas, but just that the events in unincorporated areas would, by default, automatically score a higher percentage of what our recommendations would be.
One quick question. Would, do the new scores reflect, council, when we last voted to approve these type of projects, removed many of them that were reoccurring, that had been collecting these funds for five-plus years. Does the new grading reflect that statement by council that we want this money not to go to, once you've established it's time to get off the money and let us invest in something new?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And I guess going back to some of the applications where we made recommendations before, you know, originally, and we're going to be more stringent upon it as well as, and council actually followed suit with it, is that if you don't score a minimum of 70 points, you don't get any funding.
Okay.
Or we don't recommend any funding, I should say. Obviously, it's up for council to decide what funding's-
That's fair enough.
I guess I will ask my question, because I was thinking, you know, we did have some issues with these long-standing events, continuing to get money, continuing to get money, and my question was going to be, did we set some type of baseline that says, you know, six years, seven years, eight years, 10 years, if this is a continuous-running event, you know, you should be self-sufficient, self-supporting, don't look to continue to get these funds through infinity, like we've had to kind of make that statement here recently to some organizers.
Yes, and again, you know, they're basically penalized when it comes to that type in the scorecard, if they've been a repeat applicant. You know, to your point, we want to encourage new events, other ways to drive tourism dollars to the county.
But we didn't set a year total, six years, seven years, eight years?
Nothing has been set in our scorecard that I can recall. That's something that we could, we would certainly look at incorporating, if that's something the council would like us to do.
Perhaps, once we see a draft, that'll help spur-
Absolutely.
Mark, I have a question. What is the timeline for applications? Like, I mean, do applications need to be in by a certain time? I know last year you had meetings, like, meetings so that people understood what was going on. I just don't know what that timeline was.
Yes, so we have three workshops, and that's a good segue. We've got, our first one's on February 15th at 2:00, March 15th at 10:00 a.m., and then March 22nd at 12:00. And as prerequisite, you have to attend one of these workshops in order for your application to even be accepted for review. That information, we are actually going to email out to previous applicants, and then Kevin and Karen are going to get it.
I'll order it to Trish.
They're going to get it on the county website, so that's out there for new applicants to have that information.
So, do they apply first and then attend a workshop, or can they attend the workshop to get help?
No, they need to, no, they don't get the application. The application's not available online, so they have to actually attend the workshop to get the application.
Okay.
So, that's kind of our, one of our internal checks and balances, just within our committee. And the filing deadline, to answer your question, is April 15th, I believe. I think that's right.
I'll do my taxes at my H-Tax.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Amy Mark?
Thank you. One other thing unrelated to the scorecard that we wanted to bring up is, we currently have two vacant seats. One person from District 5 moved out, I think that's right, moved out of Rock Hill. And then we also have two terms that are going to come up this summer. District 2, Mr. Williams had indicated today in our meeting that he is not going to stay on, and Drew Wilford, I'm not sure what his intent is, he was out of town on business, whether or not he is going to seek to stay on.
District 2, you said Mr. Williams, is that Chick Williams?
Yes, this should be District 7.
Yeah, it's District 7.
I'm sorry, I said the wrong thing. I was looking at the-
Yeah, more than likely the one that moved out of District 5 will apply for that seat. Anyway, we'll do that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Well, I wonder why she had no Williams too, but, now, if they moved out of District 5, they moved out of District 6.
So, we really urge council-
Yes, I've lost my pointy, so I don't have anybody on there because he moved out and he just immediately kicked out, so trying to get my guy in there.
So, you know, we really urge council to help us fill these seats. Obviously, people have commitments from time to time where they can't attend meetings for different reasons. We've got one member who's a nurse, so she works different shifts, sometimes she can't be there. So, obviously, it's important for us to have a quorum when we're at these meetings, and if we have all these empty seats, it's hard for us to take votes when we need to. And then one other thing that we want to encourage, welcome to the new CBB Director, but working more closely with the CBB in their efforts to help market these types of events in the unincorporated areas, so really try to help build that relationship and strengthen it when it comes to new applicants. So, there've been some, obviously, some changes over there, so want to make sure that we try to work closely with them on any of these types of events that they can help promote.
Any questions? Mr. Madden?
I guess one thing that I do want to highlight over here, as we're in the budget season, to talk about with the CBB, there were some questions asked about the funding. If we, for instance, give one of the applicants marketing funding, and they go to do their marketing with the CBB, does the CBB also then charge them for the marketing? One thing I'd like to look at, those who go through our budget process and work with the CBB, I don't think it's good practice to say, if somebody that we give marketing money to, and we give, you know, roughly 80% of the revenue to the CBB, to have them charge the same person we give marketing to, I'd like them to work with the people or the organizations that we're working with in giving H-Tax dollars to, to not charge them for the marketing that they do. Just a thought. We are by far the largest fund provider for the Rock Hill York County CBB.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly, that if we are giving an entity money, and then they're turning around and paying that money to the CBB to market, and we're paying for that marketing, that seems odd, so I'd certainly support us taking a hard look at that. Anybody to comment? Mark, anything else? Thank you very much for coming. Survived the snowpocalypse.
Not yet.
Schools closed, by the way.
Rock Hill schools have already closed, Christi is informed.
Oh, really?
We're well on our way.
We better cancel this meeting now. I'm going to be getting home and bread, we've got to hurry.
I'll give you a ride.
Public Forum. First person we have is Laurie Hatter, speak on the animal shelter director.
Hello. My name is Laurie Hatter, and I live at 22 Sunrise Point in Clover. And I'm here to comment about the hiring of the new animal director, animal shelter director. About six years ago, I began volunteering with an animal rescue, doing primarily grant requests and that type of thing, and through that, I've learned about how important collaboration is between the rescue groups. And teamwork and communication between the animal shelter and the rescue groups is really important, too. We're all, you know, working towards the same goal of trying to, you know, increase our live release rate from the shelter. So, in filling this position, it's critical that we get the right person, someone that has compassion for the animals and is comfortable working with them. They also need to have good management skills, such as being, you know, flexible, works well with others, is a forward thinker, a problem solver, because obviously, there's a lot of problems there. What this position needs is like a compassionate bridge builder, you know, someone that's going to move forward. And we have, we're fortunate to already have in this state someone, a leader in this area, and that's Charleston. They are a forefront in no-kill animal shelters, and, you know, we can follow in their footsteps, but we needed a good animal shelter director to do that. Over the last several years, this position, you know, has had a lot of turnover. I mean, it's a tough job, but this is our chance to get it right and, you know, get someone so we can move forward into the, become a no-kill shelter like Charleston. So, even if it takes a little bit more time to find that person, it would certainly be worth finding the right person. So, thank you for allowing me to comment.
Karen? Karen Brown?
Good evening, everybody. Karen Brown, 127 Sunny's Way, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29708, I'm with the Humane Society of York County, and I'm commenting on the same thing as Laurie, we're just talking on the new director that you're all hiring. First, I want to say thank you to the council for meeting with rescues earlier this year to hear us. Hear some of our concerns, being open to some of those, listening to what we had to say, taking the time, like I said, to meet with us. We know that a new director is on the horizon, and this is a prime opportunity for us to just put in our two cents, kind of tell you the parts that we think are really important. I'm sure, you know, you folks have got, you know, your own concerns, but we want to make sure that you hear some of the things that would be important to us. Laurie had mentioned some of them. I have made a short list, and I can give that to you now, or I'll just read off it and then give it to you. I hate to, you know, walk around with paper, but some of the things that are most important to animal advocates in the area is the first thing that Laurie mentioned, and that is, you know, demonstrate compassion towards animals. What we really want to make sure is that that person that comes in, you know, cares about animals, they have a thing for them. You know, you wouldn't be a pediatrician and you don't like kids, right? You know, so you're not going to come into work with animals and run a whole shelter and, you know, and you don't have a thing for animals, and you don't like cats and dogs. And we're not talking about somebody that just owns a pet, because probably everybody in the room probably has a cat or dog, or has or grew up with one, so we're talking about somebody who's volunteered before, someone who works with alliance groups, someone who has a job-related business, someone who belongs to animal running hiking groups, you know, dealt with animal fundraising, you know, someone that has a passion, someone that this is what they do, this is what they like to do. They like to have a dog in their office, you know, they like to have it, you know, they like to go out in the, you know, in the area and work with the dogs, they want to meet them, they want to see what's going on, they want to get down and dirty. That's one of the big things that we heard about, some of the people that rescue, excuse me, that volunteer at the shelter, you know, that some of the folks that have been different jobs, you know, don't like to get their hands dirty, you know, and that's like so not dog-like, okay? You know, if you work with animals, I mean, you're dirty, whether, no matter what clothes you have on. That's just the way it goes. Another big thing is knowing best practices and willing to get to those. Laurie mentioned that. Charleston is an example. They're not perfect, but they are an example. Someone who's willing to establish maybe an animal welfare advisory board, something that's willing to work with different groups.
Karen, I hate to stop you, but we only have a two-minute limit on, and I gave you about 20 seconds over.
You did.
Yeah, thinking you might wrap up, but, so I do have to stop you.
Okay, then I will-
We invite you back next month.
I'm not coming next month, but thank you. What I'll do then is I'll just hand this out, and this gives you the points, and I'll-
Certainly, if you'll give those to Mr. Shanahan.
I'll give you one, and I will-
Give them all to him.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, sorry to go over.
Okay, thank you. As we approach the consent agenda, I have been asked to pull item 29 and item 38, which we will move to business number, new business number seven and new business number eight, respectively. Are there any other items that a member would like pulled?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move item number 29 from the consent agenda to new business.
All right, I just got that one. That's good. Any other items?
I don't need to pull one, but I just want to make sure that we're using the, Karen has amended the minutes to reflect the discussion that we had on impact fees, and that it was
and I will.
Certainly, if you'll give those to Mr. Shanahan.
I'll give you one, and I will.
Give them all to him.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, sorry to go over.
Thank you. As we approach the consent agenda, I have been asked to pull item 29 and item 38, which we will move to business number, new business number seven and new business number eight, respectively. Are there any other items that a member would like pulled?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move item number 29 from the consent agenda to new business.
All right, I just got that one. That's good. Any other items?
I don't need to pull one, but I just want to make sure that we're using the, Karen has amended the minutes to reflect the discussion that we had on impact fees, and that it was under new business, that that's the version of the minutes that we're approving.
Yes. There are also, I believe, I need a motion to defer item number 30.
And then we need to pull it.
All right, I'm pulling number 30, now I'd like a motion to defer it.
I'd like a, I'll make a motion to defer item number 30.
I can do that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, we have deferred item number 30 to our next meeting.
What is item number 30?
Item 30, the clarification was the utility agreement.
Yeah.
Between us and Comporium, to move the utility lines.
Staff requested that.
Yeah, it was a staff request to remove that.
Deferred.
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Public hearing, number one, rezoning action to hold public hearing and consider second reading, case number 1741, tax map 608000025, request to rezone a property from BD3 to RC2 in District 5. Are there anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone opposed?
Move to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Old business, number one, council manager Bill Shanahan to provide counsel with an update on York County custodial staff.
Good evening, council. This is a pretty easy one. Six months ago, we were looking at this department, and they had 32 employees with a total budget for employees and supplies of $1,375,978.52 in the last six months. They've reduced it down to 26 employees, with a total budget of $1,134,089.29, which is a savings of $241-plus thousand. They have implemented quite a few new processes, there's training that's going on, and we actually have checklists that are going out to the different department heads to show them what's being done. And I gotta be honest, I haven't had a complaint in months. So, it's going in the right direction.
Did you say we saved $241,000 from six months ago?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, number two. Coming to provide a quarterly report to council regarding construction projects, Mr. Britton.
Thank you, and good evening. Pleased to be here tonight, offer a brief presentation of your building program. After my presentation, I'll be more than happy to field any questions you may have. Please turn to tab section one, we'll start with moss justice. As a general commentary, construction is very weather-dependent. The weather here recently has been very trying. It's not necessarily an issue with people and personnel, but more of a material issue. You can't mix mortar, when the water will freeze, you know, it's hard to batch concrete. So, it doesn't stop construction, but it certainly slows it down. I want to talk about moss justice in several phases. Phase one, which we bid out, included the parking deck, it included our site parking, and it also included the connected connectivity in terms of the tunnel. It's all complete, except for finalizing the punch list. The temporary certificate of occupancy for the deck was received on the 11th of December. It's now being occupied. The extension of the tunnel is part of the second package, and we'll talk about it in a second. Package two has two buildings, one is, you will see me refer to Building One and Building Two. Building One is the judicial building. Foundations are installed, and we are hopeful to start erecting steel next week, going vertical. Building Two, which is the sheriff's addition, we are clearing the parking lot, getting some utilities in, in preparation to start getting foundations there. We've got several photos and exhibits, this is just the rendering, we've included it. Until we have a final picture, I'll include it, just to keep everybody aware. This is an aerial, it was taken in December, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed. Parking deck, the tunnel that connects this area, so that you can take the inmates down and without cross, crossing the traffic and pathways of either the judges or jurors. We were bringing them in a tunnel up to an area here, and they'll go vertical in an elevator from there. Parking lot that was already installed, this is where the judicial addition, and then this is where the addition to the sheriff's will take place. This is the extension of the basement tunnel. It's a pretty technical component, we're dealing with building a, some low-bearing walls that are in, being impacted by existing building foundations. It's, so you're seeing some things that you don't typically see in normal construction. This is shotcrete, we're putting foundation, reinforcing steel in and forms, and then using shotcrete. It's kind of a material that's used in building pools, but we're doing it to shore back the soil and to be a base for the forms. Building One foundations are all but complete, not quite complete. This is a, Building Two parking lot demo, getting another way, getting ready to get the soil ready and foundations ready for, getting everything ready for foundations. Site utilities going in, so it's just a precursor, getting everything ready to go vertical. Second project is the family court. Again, we have multiple projects and phases. Phase one, which was the early site package, it's all but complete. There is a little addition that's, that has not been done, connecting two parking lots, but everything else is complete. And that is not really a critical path item, it'll be complete as weather permits. Phase two, which is the building, we're going vertical, we're well underway. We're starting at the bottom of the basement, getting the foundation in, where the Sallyport and everything is, getting the foundation in, getting the retaining walls installed, and then by the end of this month, beginning of next month, we'll be on the main level, going vertical from there. Also, several photographs, that's rendering, kind of a site to orient you, and this is kind of what it looked like at the end of December. All this parking, parking, and this is the Sallyport and low basement level, we're getting first going vertical. Again, retaining walls and reinforcing steel, kind of same stuff, grade beam. Next project is the Fort Mill and Clover magistrate projects. As reported in December, the Fort Mill magistrate is complete and occupied. Clover magistrate, we received our CO on December the 15th. They, we've moved in, York County's moved in, the magistrate's moved in, we should be finished with the punch list by the end of this month. Incidentally, both of these were finished about two months ahead of the initial schedule that was put together at the beginning of the building program. That's the front, and if you remember, the Clover magistrate was more about security. We built a, kind of a front entrance lobby, also where you have the deal glass, and we made all that bulletproof or, so that we, you know, before, we really didn't have a whole lot of separation, other than just a single pane of glass. And that's the waiting area. New government center, rough grading is complete. All the known contaminants that, well, we knew about, contaminants, all that has been addressed, all that we know of, there's potentially some in the, underneath the existing parking lot, and as we finish the building and do the phase of parking, might encounter some, but for the most part, we are out of that. Our concentration now is foundations and structure, as you went by today, it's really moving forward. It's a clean site, and contractors are doing a very good job. Foundations were about 80% complete, slab-on-grade, which we only have one slab-on-grade, is about 50% complete. Steel structure erection started January 5th, we're about 20% complete. Slab-on, and then steel deck installation, which we'll talk about, will start February the 5th, and we'll start basically slab, 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 and building out, and then getting this thing dried in. Project's going well. As an aerial photograph, those are elevator and stair towers, right here. This is a pretty substantial retaining wall to backfill, so that this, the intent, and we have the architects that'll be discussing the project after me, but this is basically the intent, is to line that up with the courthouse, so that you kind of have a unified front of house along Congress Street. Pouring place concrete with some structural steel. The inside of the building, this would actually be kind of where the elections commission, group will be, and the backside of the slab has been poured, this is in prep for the next pour.
You keep them downstairs in the dark?
I'm sorry.
Is that where you keep them downstairs in the dark?
Well, it's a, it's a, you know, they have a lot of storage.
Secure, we'll call it secure.
Secure, yes. A lot of secure, a lot of storage, it's an ideal place. Public works, we'll talk about the support facilities. It's again, the county doesn't have any really easy, just start-finish kind of projects, all of them are cause and effect, multiple phases. This is no different. Foundations, pre-engineered steel, and roof and wall sightings for, two of the buildings are almost complete. And they're also starting to do some interior stud framing and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, rough ends, just to kind of tell you what we're doing. This is the new equipment maintenance, this is the addition to the administration. Once this is complete, this building, the operations in here will move here, all this will be demoed, and then we'll have the new equipment storage, and we'll reorganize this entire campus.
Top left of that is refueling, I believe?
Correct.
And I brought something to management's attention recently about that. Have we addressed the fact that our fire trucks and our large equipment cannot pull up to those pumps, or they have to pull up and then back, back out? Have we looked at anything on that yet, as far as?
Yes.
They've been looking at, and Bill's here, he can probably, but, wrong, wrong part.
Yeah. But he, he probably talked for you.
When they looked at that, they were trying to expand and get more room there, without trying to relocate those pumps and without repositioning, so they are, are looking at that. They're gonna do some tests out there and make sure that they can get the proper turning rates and stuff.
And I guess, so council knows, I got a call from one of our chiefs, one out there, and right now, the way it is, they have to pull a fire truck in, fuel it, and then they have to back, back out with all the other trucks lined up behind them, trying to get in to fuel, because there's nowhere to turn or to pull through on anything, so it's an accident waiting to happen right now, so.
Incidentally, the, you know, there wasn't, original scope did not include much work for that area, so I think what our intent would be to maximize what we have to, if it's surface parking and some things like that, I think it's pretty easy to accomplish. This is a photograph of what we call building C, the, the equipment maintenance, and Building A, which is the administration expansion. This is a photograph of recycling, which is our next project. Pre-engineered steel has been erected, obviously the slab's been installed. Some multiple packages as well, we've got a building package and an equipment package. The building should be dried in by mid-February, and where the equipment itself has been, you know, multiple manufacturers, it's being fabricated, the process line. They anticipate mobilizing sometime in end of February and start fabricating, insulation then, so that, that project's moving very well also. With that, the next tab is, well, here's a couple photos, site utilities, perimeter walls, push walls. And then our tab section two is our schedule, the red line represents today. I'm, I'm comfortable with the progress on all the projects to date. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Are we, just, are we on budget?
We are.
On all projects?
We've got some challenges, but as of now, we're, you know, I'm fairly confident we're gonna finish the projects, the program, within budget.
Did I read correctly that we're only behind on one project by seven days?
Well, we're, we're behind projects, the family court, we're behind project a little bit longer because we had a stay, we had to stay the award. We've discussed that previously. Having said that, whether, we have not reviewed and made ruling on current requests, we require the contractor to make formal requests over and above what is included in the front-end documents, which is a 10-year average. And if it's a precipitation, for example, of a tenth of an inch or more on a day, the cumulative amount must be over the 10-year average. At that point, it triggers the allowance of a, and then obviously, if you have a delusion, you have a wet, but not workable day, even though there's no precipitation, that would be, that would qualify as well. All that being said, we are, we are within a fairly small window on all our projects.
Thank you. Architectural design update from Stevens and Wilkinson on the government center.
I'm Bill Fleming with Stevens and Wilkinson, and with me is Jackie Pierce with our office. We're here to update the council on where we are with the interior finishes. We had several meetings with the, several staff members who were instrumental in helping us select the finishes for the interior of the building. So, what we're showing you tonight is everything that's in the building, if you could turn the building upside down and shook it, all this would stay inside the building. This is the carpet, the tile, the terrazzo, things along that line, doesn't have anything to do with, in furniture, but this is built-ins, casework, things like that, so it'll be what stays with the building if you turned it up and shook it out at the end of the, of the day. So, with that, we appreciate the opportunity to be in here tonight, and I'm gonna let Jackie sort of walk through the finishes and tell you what's sort of gonna go where in the primary areas.
Okay. So, after meeting with the finish committee, we basically decided to go with an overall neutral palette for the entire building. When you enter into the entry lobby, we'll have terrazzo on that entire floor. There will be two little accent pieces in the terrazzo that will be in different shades of gray. One will be the county seal, which will be in the entry lobby, as you see in this rendering here, and then we'll have another little accent outside of the council chambers on the entry level. Moving into the council chambers, we decided to dress it up a little bit there, there's gonna be this nice green wall covering in that space with a neutral carpet, and the wood's going to be, is going to match the same paneling that we have in the entry lobby at the dais, and we have some wood paneling behind the dais as well, that you'll see, just to break up some of the wall covering. And this is the countertop material, it's quartz, that will be out on the dais. In the office areas, there will be another neutral carpet in a linear pattern that is going, and there will be neutral walls in those areas with a few accents of green and blue that you see here. And we'll have, you know, accents of gray with LVT in the galley and workroom areas and break room, which will also have those other accents. In the public areas on the other floor, every floor but the entry level, there will be these two tiles, the flat gray tile will be the field color, and then we'll have this darker taupe at the, where the tile direction changes at the corridor entries and things like that. And then for the restrooms on all the floors, there will be another gray tile for the flooring. These two, this white and taupe or gray tile will be on the walls, it'll go about five feet on every wall but the wet wall, and there will be a nice white wall covering over that. That's just a really brief overview of everything. Does everybody have any, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Williams? The carpets, did you say that we're gonna have carpets in any of the public areas, or is that all in the offices?
No, that's only in the office areas and conference rooms, yes.
All the corridors, the public corridors, first, I mean, the second floor, which is the entrance you'll move, entering to the building on from the parking lot, will be terrazzo where the primary tax assessor, finance department, auditor, and council chambers there is, those, that corridor will be the terrazzo that we're showing here.
Is terrazzo basically the replacement for asbestos tile? Is that what? What is terrazzo?
It's a pour-in-place product.
It's a what?
It's a concrete, and it's a high product.
Oh, pour-in.
Yeah, it's a very long-lasting material that's been around for thousands of years.
That sounds good.
Easy to clean and maintain.
We also have some scuffmaster paint in the public corridors to try to keep a little more abuse-resistant in the finishes that are in the corridors as well, but, so there's really no carpet in any of the corridor areas.
Good, yeah, terrazzo's fancy concrete, oh, good.
Any other questions?
Good choice of colors, it looks good.
Thank you all.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Old business number four, rezoning action, consider third reading, case number 17-37, tax map number 726000066, rezone from UD to RD1 at 332 Mark Trail Lane in the Fort Mill community. Have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business, an audit presentation by Green Finney.
Y'all probably did a lot better than you were this time last.
Yes. I don't think we're gonna meet the 6:35 time that you're looking for.
We have missed that.
But we will try to go quick, 'cause, you know, I know one thing for you, you're already in fiscal year 18, and you're already probably starting the budget for 19, so this is a little bit old news. So, we're not gonna try to go through the Green financial statement that you had before you. Sometimes in the old days, we used to flip through this and we'd lose everybody within a few pages. But what we have done in the past is just kind of hit the highlights in a PowerPoint, and if you don't mind, we'll walk through that. If you have any questions, feel free to interject those, or if you want to wait till the end, do that as well. But I'm gonna go fairly quick, 'cause I feel like this is kind of old news. But again, I don't want to act like if there's something important, please interject. All right, is it up here?
You ain't finished yet.
Oh, okay. We'll go through this.
Yeah, hold it.
Great, okay. If you look on the, the bottom of the page, we, one of the things we like to emphasize is the importance of internal controls. And one of the things that's key for us, as we look at your internal controls, if we become across significant issues, it's paramount for us to make sure that management knows it and that you know about it, because how can you fix something if you didn't know there was a problem? So, again, some of the auditing standards require that, and so if you flip to the next page on the back, this year, we're just kind of reminding everybody about what they have found in fraud cases. And they said that in general, when fraud- And they said that in general, when fraud occurs, there's always three things that are present. And we're going to look at that briefly. If you look at the very top of that triangle, is that there was a need. Somebody had to have a need in their life so that they'd be willing to commit fraud. Maybe that need is a husband lost a job. I have a whole bunch of medical bills. So there's the need. The second item there, there has to be a rationalization in their mind why it's okay to commit fraud. Sometimes that rationalization is, you know, I've been here working twenty years and I haven't had a raise in five, and that's not fair. Sometimes a rationalization, you know, I work harder than Cindy and she makes more money than me. That's not fair. The only item on this triangle that you have any control over is the opportunity. You want to make the opportunity so difficult that somebody's not going to want to try it with you. And that's why we harp on controls while we don't want to see one person who can do it all. We want there to be checks and balances. We want there to be review and approval processes. And those are the type of things that your management is trying to install, but that we're also checking for in those significant areas. So again, that's just a quick, you know, snapshot on fraud, and we'll just move ahead on the bottom there. These are your financial statements. If we flip to the next slide on the top of three, our responsibility is to issue you an opinion. And the best opinion in today's language is an unmodified opinion. What that means is we're not aware of anything being materially wrong. Yes, there's dollars off. I can assure you there's dollars off it, but they're not material. And so that's what we're opining to in our opinion. On the bottom of three, we're going to briefly look at your general fund, the fund balance there. You had a total fund balance of seventy-eight point eight million. You increased about two point seven million, like Kevin mentioned earlier. You have various categories of fund balance, one being non-spendable of two point four, restricted fund balance of three point eight, some committed fund balance of twenty-one point five, primarily related to vehicle, equipment, and so forth, and a little bit of assigned fund balance. If you take these items where there are some constraints, there's some purpose for them, you're left with the amounts on the next page on the top of four, which there are no constraints, and that's called unassigned. And your unassigned fund balance is fifty point seven. You can look at the chart a little bit on the right to kind of give you a graphic of kind of where it's trended over the last couple of years. I think, if you remember, y'all have had some discussions about moving some of that unassigned to help on some of the debt. And so that's something I know that there's some discussion on. But right now, your unassigned is approximately forty-five percent of your two thousand and eighteen budgeted expenditures. And y'all have a kind of a target of twenty-five percent. So you can see you're in really good stead as it relates to your target. On the bottom of four there on that slide are just some of the reasons to have a good fund balance. Remember, some of your revenues are cyclical. They don't come in the same amount every month. And so you have to have, there's peaks and valleys in your revenue collection. So you have to have, at certain times, more money to carry you through the rest of the year when you don't collect as much. So again, it helps you with better interest rates, and it just gives you flexibility to deal with issues if you have a strong fund balance. All right, next page on the top of five, let's briefly look at your general fund revenues. They were ninety-seven point seven million. The biggest piece there, as you see, is property taxes and other forms of taxes, then licenses, fines, and permits, and then intergovernmental revenue. As it relates to the prior year, it increased about two percent, two point two million. And we kind of highlight where some of that was in property taxes and licenses and so forth, and a decrease, though, in investment income. As it relates to your budget, you came in slightly less than budget by one point seven or two percent, primarily due to lower-than-expected intergovernmental revenues, partially offset by higher licenses, fines, and permits. Those growth revenues, what we're seeing across, you know, the state, growth revenues are up, but there can be, you know, fluctuations on grants. One year you get a grant, one year you don't. And so that can create a swing in your revenues from year to year. On the bottom of five is your general fund expenditures. They were ninety point one million. You see there, general government was thirty-six point three, public safety thirty-two point five, and then the rest in those other areas. You actually had a slight decrease in expenditures. A lot of that, if you remember, last year, you made a really large OPEB payment. You didn't make, you made a big one this year, but last year it was really big. And so that drove a little bit of the decrease, you know, the decrease there that we're seeing. But you also added some salaries and benefits as well that are counter, that are kind of countering that. As it relates to your budget, on the very bottom point on page five, you were twenty point nine million or nineteen percent under budget, primarily due to economic development projects and other projects and capital items that just didn't get spent or got pushed off. You know, you also have a good bit, when you do your budget, you assume everybody's going to be there for the whole year. Well, you have a lot of vacancies. People leave. By the time you hire somebody, it might take three to six, nine months. So you end up having millions of dollars of savings because of vacancies. And so that is always kind of there too. But your staff has to budget, assuming everybody's in place for the whole year. All right, next page. Let's look at some of your enterprise fund. Your water and sewer fund had an increase in net position of ten point four million compared to eleven point eight. Remember, with the rate study that you had, you kind of took the middle of the road, so that did drive some of the revenue increase. But then also, you do have some capital projects that are ongoing that are being funded by some of that rate increase as well. As it relates to your solid waste disposal operation, you had a decrease in net position of one point five, and I think that's another area you're looking at doing a rate study. You don't want that to become the norm that we're losing in a fund consistently year after year. And that rate study will help you analyze, you know, what do we need to do here? Are the rates right, or do we need to raise them and so forth? On the bottom of six, briefly look at some of your Pennies for Project Funds and some of these Capital Projects Funds here. The two thousand and three Capital Projects Sales Tax Fund had a decrease in fund balance of six point two, primarily just related to various projects and items that were going on this year, and that was kind of planned. Your Pennies Three Capital Projects Fund had an increase in fund balance of nineteen point four, as revenues of thirty-four point four million exceeded the expenditures of fifteen million. You're left with a fund balance there, as you see, of about a hundred and five million for the ongoing projects. Your debt service fund, remember, that's got to be used for debt service, had a decrease in fund balance of five point four million, and that was just primarily related to regularly-scheduled principal payments. And you're left with a balance of about thirteen point five at the end of June thirtieth this past year. Next page on the top of seven, if you remember a couple of years ago, you know, the GASB issued a statement, and we had to implement a new accounting for pensions. And the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, took the position, even if you don't have your own pension plan, but if you participate in a state plan, and if that state cost-sharing plan is underfunded, every participating government has to record their proportionate share of that liability on your books. And so what we're seeing here is what that is. If you look at your net pension liability, at the end of June of this past year, it was ninety-five point one million dollars. And that was actually an increase of twelve point six million. I mean, the pension plan on the state level is, has done really bad. Now, what they're trying to do to fix that problem is to increase the contributions, and that's why your rates are going up. And we've all seen those articles in the paper. And so the way that they're hoping to knock down that pension liability is by increasing what the governments are having to pay in so that over time, hopefully, the liability goes down, then your proportionate share then would go down. So again, the really takeaway from this, it's not like you have to pay this ninety-five million tomorrow, but how they're going to get you is that we're going to raise your rates, and you're going to have to pay more every year. So we may not get ninety-five point one, you know, next year, but it might be an extra five hundred thousand next year and another five hundred thousand the next year. So over time, they're hoping to shore up the pension system. All right, now again, remember, that has no impact on your governmental funds, your general fund, but it does affect those government-wide statements in your enterprise funds. All right, on the bottom of seven, let's just briefly look at your debt. You had a total debt of a hundred and fifty-one point three million. We kind of list the various categories of debt there. We mentioned the fact that you issued four million in two thousand and seventeen refunding GO bonds. And so we also then talk about the principal payments and the interest payments that you made this past year, which were combined about nineteen point five million. As it relates to fiscal year eighteen, your debt service payments are estimated to be about eighteen point seven. So think about if you, you have a mortgage on your house, you have a mortgage payment. Well, this is your mortgage payment for fiscal year eighteen is about eighteen point seven million dollars. As it relates to your debt limit, you have about fifty-five million that is available for borrowing without having to go to a referendum. All right, next page. Let's briefly look at your capital assets. Your capital assets, the ending balance was about two hundred and sixty-three million. And you had, that was an increase of about eighteen million. You had additions of thirty-three million. But remember, on capital assets, if we buy a new fire truck, we have to depreciate it over its estimated useful life. And so you had depreciation expense, though, of fifteen million going the other way, and that's where it nets back to the eighteen million change that we just talked about. You have construction commitments of about a hundred and seventy-one million. You're pretty familiar with this. This is what they just kind of went over, a lot of those projects, and we just kind of list them again. You know, what are some of the projects that the commitments were in place as of the end of last year? Okay, on the bottom of eight, OPEB is just a fancy name for retiree health insurance. You made your annual required contribution this year. You made that. You have a net OPEB obligation, the very last bullet point, of about eight hundred thousand dollars, which is pretty negligible, but there's a new accounting standard coming that we'll talk about in the next slide. So if you flip over to the next page, top of nine, I think you probably heard us talk about that we had to implement, last year, we're going to have to implement a new standard on tax abatement disclosures. And what those are, are those fee-and-loo deals. They want, I should say, the GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, wants the readers of the financial statements to know what deals are in place that reduce taxes. And so your number, if you went to the notes to the financial statements, was about two point seven million. That's how much your property taxes were less because of these fee-and-loo deals. Now, the bad side of that, it doesn't show the other side of the equation, what did those fee-and-loo deals bring the county? The jobs, the other investment, and so forth. But again, the accounting rules are only looking at it one way, how much taxes were reduced. And not only for you, the school districts and all them have to disclose this as well. All right, the next bullet point there on the top of page nine is talking about GASB seventy-five. This is the retiree health insurance one. What they're going to do, starting next year for you, is you have to record the net OPEB liability. Now, we talked about in the previous slide, you had a liability or obligation of eight hundred thousand. Your net OPEB liability is probably closer to about seventeen million dollars, and that's going to have to get recorded starting next year. So what they're doing is they're looking, saying, what is the total obligation? You're going to one day owe retirees the whole mortgage balance, and you need to start recording it starting next year. Before they, before next year, they said you only had to worry about the mortgage payment. You didn't have to worry about the total liability. Only if you didn't make the annual mortgage payment would you have to record a liability. That's why it was so low. So it's kind of a change methodology, very similar to pensions. All right, on the bottom of page nine, again, we tried to look at your controls and so forth. We did not come across any findings to report to you as council. We looked at your single audit programs, and we looked at your child support services, and we didn't come across any weaknesses or significant items there either. There is a separate letter you probably were provided. It's called a management letter. If we came across things, recommendations, we would list them here. If we had disagreements with management, or we didn't get along with Kevin, which is very possible, but we didn't have any of those items either. So again, you know, if we did have items, I would tell you to flip to that, and we would kind of work our way through that.
They didn't give us that letter, so you tell me there's nothing in it?
No, there isn't.
No, there's not.
One of the things in there, we actually attached your journal entries from the audits, and the staff really did a good job in the sense of last year, we had a number more adjustments, and they really worked on closing out things. And we had very few adjustments this year. So that's a very good thing, is that they were really already closing out and trying to make sure the numbers were really finalized before we started the audit. So again, that's in there as well. Last slide, and I know, kind of just summary, you have an unmodified opinion, you have strong financial condition. I know I talk quick, but I think you liked that because we're done in this section. But any questions you might have? Yes?
Mr. Williams? The, I just want to make sure, I think I heard it by the time you said the, on the front page, you were talking about effective internal controls. It says there are limitations on internal controls. That is a general statement. That is not a state.
That's correct. That's correct.
That you said that you found our controls.
Right. But you know, here's one thing, is if you have an area where you're collecting ten thousand dollars of money, let's say at some small office, that wouldn't be significant for us to go look at that area. There could be really bad controls.
That's what no findings noted me. You didn't run into anything.
We didn't come across the areas where we were testing and looking.
Kevin's hiding it good if it's out there.
Right.
Couple of things I do want to point out there. The vacancies, if y'all remember in the two thousand and eighteen budget, we put a million dollars of fund balance to offset expected vacancies. We'll tweak that number accordingly again next year because we do have a high number of vacancy, particularly in the sheriff's office, although he's got his own budget, and that's going to overflow into his bucket. And once he reaches a ten percent, it'll flow into our bucket, the rest of the general fund. The draw, the debt service drop, that was a big number that dropped, just so y'all are aware. We were still spending down the premium on the bonds we borrowed, the two thousand and sixteen bonds. We got fifteen million dollars for the premiums that could only be spent on debt service payments. So we're drawing that balance down to get to a reasonable number, and then we'll adjust the debt service mileage accordingly. And the, wanted to point out too, the two point seven million dollars for GASB seventy-seven, that was only the county's portion. If you look at, for instance, Fort Mill School District's note disclosure, their number's significantly higher than two point seven million dollars on theirs. That's the, only the county's portion we foregone.
I meant to ask you that the other day.
The bond, you know, as we get into the budget process, I'll get with y'all, but right now, I've already done up an Excel spreadsheet. We're going to transfer a significant amount of money out of the general fund to start a new debt service fund. And I've got a debts, a mileage increase for fiscal year nineteen and then one for fiscal year twenty that will go into this new debt service fund. And ideally, that's it, and we have that money flowing there. And comes to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we can pay off all of the GEO debt the county has. I would like to get us to the point where only debt we have is the revenue bonds in the water and sewer fund. And you know, that would roughly be about a fifteen mil drop that would fall off every taxpayer in the county if we can get to that point.
Here, here. Mr. Roddy?
I think about answered one of my first questions. I wrote down, can we be debt-free in ten years? It sounded would be fast-tracking, be faster than ten years. All right. My next question was about the OPEB. Do we still need to pursue those payments or contributions pretty aggressive to kind of catch up?
Yeah, I would encourage you, if your budget allows and you have, you know, the ability to start budgeting a higher contribution, it's kind of like saving for retirement. The more you save earlier, the less you have to save in the later years. So the more you can go ahead and contribute and start, you know, paying down that liability, the better off you are.
I just want to make a quick comment. I like how you kind of broke out the non-spendables, the restricted fund balance, the committed funds, the assigned fund balance.
One good thing is, in the notes to the financial, there's a huge chart that shows you all the detail for that. So again, I just wanted to point you in the notes, Kevin has put, here's a really detailed schedule that might even help you more on that.
It's a little fuzzy right now.
Yeah.
The forty-five percent of our two thousand and eighteen expenditures, that's, that's pretty strong.
That is.
That's really strong.
Yeah, that is.
You know, for as a county, you know, how do, how do you think we stack up?
I wish I could tell you, I really just don't know. I don't do a ton of counties. I'm the municipal guy.
Yeah, just pretend like it's written, tell him you're the best. Nobody does it better.
Hey, your man would be glad to look that up for you.
Actually, South County Associate of Counties does put out that information. I looked at that just the other day to get some information, workshop coming in. They have not updated it, but we are one of the healthier counties in the state. And I want y'all to be clear, when we go to move money into the general fund, the debt service fund, I'm doing that very cautiously, we're going to keep an eye, you know, we've moved in this last budget, we took a lot of those capital-type expenses out of the general fund with the idea maybe to get the general fund strictly operational expenses.
To get the general fund strictly operational expenses to, year over year, we have a good idea we're going to have in expenses going over there. The new cap, the new debt service fund, that money is going to be over there, but if something were to happen and we need to pull it out, y'all can do that.
So you're saying your unassigned is going to go down?
The unassigned fund balance, our plan, what we're going to present to council approval is going to have that unassigned fund balance. is gonna have that unassigned fund balance drop. We're gonna get, my goal would be to get to twenty-five percent, and I would like to have every year, y'all automatically bless us to transfer any excess over twenty-five percent in this new debt service fund. And that fund, you know, as time progresses and we go through the budget process, we'll work with the financial advisors to make sure we can maximize the interest rate curve, because right now, you know, the further out you can invest, the better returns you're gonna get. And if we can get y'all to commit to that, we'll invest with the idea of taking that money out in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, to get the best return we can on the taxpayers' money.
We'll be able to give you a much better detail who, what we're wanting, how we're gonna make this happen, so, you know, right now, it's still general, but we will have you that information.
I just, I just wanna point out, this number just jumps off the page for some reason. Our unassigned fund balance is fifty point seven million dollars.
Why is that reason that hit me?
That just, that just jumps off the page like a Ferrari in my driveway.
It's not a thousand.
These are millions. Yeah, okay.
I just have one thing that I think I'm correct on, but the two thousand and seventeen four million that we did in refunding of general obligation bonds, the last tax bill that was just recently signed by the president, if I'm correct, makes all refunding issuances will no longer be tax-free by municipalities anymore. So getting debt-free helps a lot, because if we do more refunding issuances, we will have to do them at a higher rate, because they will be taxable to the investors. So that will be a much bigger expense for the county if we have to do that.
You're exactly right. Just as in your personal finances, for instance, if you're gonna be buying a car, you must be aware of, to have in mind, you either put a very large down payment on that car to pay it off in cash, if you're an entity that carries a lot of debt. And this is where, you know, some of my heartburn, and one of the reasons why we fired the financial advisors for the two thousand and sixteen debt, I personally don't like to see a big premium when a county issues debt. A school district, for instance, can take that premium, and they can put it towards the projects that they're gonna be building. We had to put in our debt service reserve. And then what ends up happening, you know, we're paying five and a half percent or so on that debt. You pay, you got that premium because you're paying above-market rates on the debt. In twenty twenty-four, you get a chance to refinance it, and everybody comes back, and you pay everybody again, the lawyers, financial advisors, all this and that stuff again, that second pass of the trough. My goal would be, again, to have the money there where we can stroke a check instead of refinance it, pay it all off. And again, ultimately, and I'll sit down with any taxpayer whenever they wanna talk about this, we will save the taxpayers' money if we pay our debt off, and save rather than borrow in the future. You know, this, and this is not new to the county. Beth Latham and previous councils worked hard to put the county in great financial shape, and we are in really good financial shape. And it affords us not to have to take it on the chin when something like that tax bill passes.
Just one quick question. I appreciate the fact that we have fifty million dollars sitting in the general fund, and that, I'm concerned though, that that represents forty-five percent of our budget expenditures, when kind of the norm is twenty-five percent.
Well.
Telling us that we have a whole lot of taxpayer money sitting in an account, not going anywhere, and there's nothing worse to me than paying taxes and not seeing government actually use it in a good way. Use it, you know, not waste it, shouldn't be wasted.
No, no. We will use that in a good way. Again, the next budget, the goal will be to get that down to twenty-five percent. Again, that's gonna be the foundation and the basis for the new debt service fund to pay that debt off. We're gonna start that fund off, not with taxpayers' new millage coming across, but with what we've saved over the years, and what Beth and everybody worked very hard to set aside to make sure where we're at. You know, I would envision taking twenty to twenty-five million dollars of that and putting the new debt service fund. We're gonna look at all the little buckets we have, and all the little funds we have, and take what we need out of those to put us where we need to be, to start us off to save. Because what I don't wanna have to do is come to you and say, I need to levy some crazy millage to get us where we can pay the debt off. We really are in position where we can move that money out of the general fund, get us to twenty-five percent, have a millage increase in twenty nineteen that we set aside in earmark specifically to be transferred to the debt service fund, and then another small one in two thousand and twenty, in earmark it to go to the new debt service fund, and then not have to levy any additional millages to pay that debt off. I feel pretty confident we can get there with what my preliminary analysis, and I've talked to some bankers already, where we can get on that money. I feel good about the position we're at, to put ourselves in there. It requires us to kind of stick to where we've been, the way we traditionally budgeted. This county has historically budgeted very conservatively. We don't go running and wasting money. We don't have fancy tile, we have fancy cement. That's just the way the county's already operated, and I intend to try to keep it going that way.
Yeah, we don't call it Tarizo either.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Number three, rezoning action, consider first reading of case number seventeen dash thirty-six, tax map six five five.
Number two.
Oh, sorry. Council discussion regarding a recommendation by the Hospitality Tax Committee to make Lake Wylie, Agro-Tourism, and the Catawba River the top three priorities for tourism in York County.
Yes, sir. We, when we say top, when they, I spoke with Watts Huckabee, as you remember, a couple of meetings ago, he came and he spoke on this, the council. And council's, staff's opinion is just 'cause they said top three, that doesn't mean we, that has to be the only three projects that we're working on. Wanted to make that pretty clear, but basically, they came up with three, it was Ag-Tourism, Lake Wylie, and Catawba River Corridor. And Ag-Tourism, what we're doing right now is, we've got a RFQ out as, as directed by the council, should be done at the end of this month, and we'll be able to move forward. We can bring in a consultant to look at what's going on with that, and update what we've already got, up to fifty thousand dollars. The other two, after talking with Watts and, and what they're recommending, and, you know, looking at this stuff, staff recommends that we basically kind of go the same way we went with Ag-Tourism. If you wanna look at these, I would recommend that we bring in a citizen committee for each of these, just like we did with Ag-Tourism. Let them take a look at it, because that's not gonna cost any money. You staff to help them out and give them information that they might need, and identify if these are actually projects that are worth looking forward, looking at in the future. That would be our recommendation, because you don't really wanna start spending the money now until we know there's a, then there's a need.
Mr. Winkler?
I asked that this be put on the agenda because, at the Economic Development Summit we had last month, I guess it was.
Yes, sir.
And the reason is, because we've all sat up here and said, we've had no discussion about this, we don't know that this is our priorities. And then the next time it comes before us, we say the same thing, so I said, okay, let's get it on the agenda and have a discussion about it. So if we think it's, that's the top three, good. If we don't, but let's, let's quit saying we've had no discussion, let's have one.
Well, I'm, and I'm gonna speak, I'll speak first, I'm not gonna go last all the time, it seems silly. I'm just gonna say, I'll throw this out. One, thank you for asking that this be on the agenda. Two, I think we should study tourism-related things for Lake Wylie, Agro-Tourism, and the Catawba River. I'm not sure, though, that setting up citizen committees to study this is, is the best use of, of our resources. Would seem to me that we ought to say, well, look at these, the same consultant who's trying to determine whether or not an agro-tourism fits in, could also probably expand that to a greater one. All we have to do is allocate a little more of the H-tax dollars, which we are willing to spend, to do that. We could study all of these, and it seems to me that that came back to staff, and staff actually reviewed it and looked at it and made a determination, this is the best use of, of these funds based off of this, and then came back to council. It might eliminate a step. I am very concerned that we have a committee that is, that has legislators on it, that has elected officials, the non-county council elected officials on it, and it has an air that gives it a greater appearance than another committee. So does that mean if we create a Lake Wylie committee, we better go get Representative Bruce Bryan on it, if we get one, you know, that you, that you better have somebody with some political power sitting on your committee, or you're basically worthless right out the bout, the box? I, I think these, the, all three of these things have to be considered. I think the council made a mistake a month ago, I voted against this, when we picked a winner, in my opinion. And obviously, that is gonna go forward no matter what, but I think we need, I'd like to see us put a concerted effort and, and spend some H-tax dollars to study these and determine what makes the most sense. And it might be that all three make sense, and we start allocating money to them, but until you study them, right now, we're gonna get one report, and that one report, I promise you, is gonna say agro-tourism works. Like, I mean, I, that, why else would you do a fifty thousand dollar study if that isn't what your going, results gonna be? So, there's my two cents. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I just, I mean, the, the fact that we got, I, I wanna make sure we don't limit it to those two things. I mean, the, the fact that, when, when I first heard it, the Catawba actually referred to the Catawba Indian Nation as being a, an underutilized asset. I mean, that, that might be an area that we need to, and it's evolved into the Catawba River. I think, I certainly think that's, that's all there. I think it's important that we identify the, the, the top things about York County that we can, and we focus, and we, and we, and we create that focus, the underutilized assets. I just wanna make sure we're not jumping to three, and saying these are the three underutilized assets. If we create two separate committees, and one's Lake Wylie and one's Catawba River, I don't know that we've picked, picked winners, but we've picked a whole lot of losers. I, I mean, they, they, and I've heard, you know, the Catawba Indian Nation, not that that necessarily needs to be one, but it's the only nation that lives on the land, on the land that it, that it got from. That's, that's a unique, I mean, it's, 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 and historically, you know, different organizations have had different dealings, but it is an underutilized asset. There's plenty more out there. I would, I would hope that we don't limit ourself, but I certainly think that the lake, that the lake's important, the river's definitely important. And I, I don't think that we picked a winner or loser, I just think agro-tourism had a ten-year head start. We probably, when we, when we started with that one, we probably should've said, hey, what else, what else is, is missing? I just wanna make sure we do that this time.
To Mr. Johnson's point, in the next budget, from what I'm hearing from y'all, it makes a lot of sense to me to put in the budget that staff, not necessarily a committee, that staff go out and get a study done on the lake, and maybe Catawba Indian Nation, as well as, as we mentioned, the finance committee, you know, we've, we owned a building that we just spent a lot of money to put a new roof on, that's got windows missing. You know, we can use hospitality tax for something like that as well, possibly, or, as I also mentioned, possibly a bike trail. But I can put in the next budget, that staff goes out and gets consultants to come up with what would be good to do or not to do specifically around those areas, rather than having to form any committees, if that's y'all's will. That can be, that can be done, and it would probably be a lot quicker to work that way, using staff rather than a committee to come up with getting consultants in place and make recommendations to y'all. Just a thought.
I think they're both worthwhile. I don't wanna limit to this and that, and say we don't do anything else, like the building we own and stuff, but I think, to sound like Mr. Johnson.
That sounds good, by the way.
We can, you know, you can tell where our priorities are by where we spend our dollars, so I think we've spent it on that, that's what, in my opinion, that's what hospitality tax dollars are for. So I would be in support of looking at that in the, in the next budget, and us moving forward with some more studies on those three, to see what, what makes sense.
I think, I think one thing that we, we failed to do in the last, I also voted against that, that agro-tourism study. Not because I'm against agro-tourism, but I feel like we were presented a, a circle, and it had three things in it, and it was divided into thirds. And I think that what we needed was a study to show what the real percentages are. I mean, really, what percent is, is agro-tourism? What percent is the Lake Wylie recreation, and what percent would be, you know, the lower Catawba River? So I think it's important. We only have a certain amount of dollars to spend, no matter what they come back and tell us would be great to have. And so I, I think, I don't, I don't particularly think that agro-tourism had a ten-year start. I think that they've been talking about it, but I don't think they've gotten anywhere. So I think they're all pretty much on level ground, and I also think that when we, we get something that's donated, when Duke Energy donates forty-eight acres to us at an existing boat landing, that we have something that we can, that we can work with. I think we're, it might be even a little farther along than agro-tourism, with things like that happening. So my, my goal is to have all three of these things studied individually or as a group, which I think makes the most sense efficiently. That's the way I would use the money if it were mine. And I think that all three things should be studied, and they should come back to us with, you know, what, what would work, what they would recommend for the county, and, and then we decide what can, what can the county afford to do, what makes sense. I'm opposed to having any more of these citizen committees to study this. I think it's a waste of their time, and I think it's a waste of our time.
The consensus, and I'm, tell me, say, no, you're wrong, if I'm wrong. We, we are, we are in favor of having at least a consultant look at the overall tourism component in York County, and the best ways to develop that. And if y'all will create a plan to allow us to do that, we can make it a part of the budget, and we can bring it forward in the spring. Sound good? All right, thank y'all. Now to number three again. Rezoning action, consider first reading case number seventeen dash thirty-six, tax map six five five zero 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 five five, and six five five zero 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 seven, to rezone from BD two to BD, no, RD two to BD three, at ten eighty and ten eighty-eight Isom Road in the Fort Mill community.
Yes, sir. I move that we defer this item.
Second.
Any discussion?
Staff, staff has indicated some outstanding traffic issues, notified the applicant, and everybody's in agreement.
Is there a point in time to defer it to?
Next meeting.
Thank you.
So first meeting in February, all right.
Brits meeting.
Any other, Brits, Brits back. After tonight, I may be happy that he's back. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Number four, recommend that council authorize staff to enter into contract negotiations regarding RFP number two four seven four for consulting services to revise York County stormwater ordinance subject to authorization of fund project via general contingency funds.
I'll move to authorize staff to do exactly what you said without reading it all over here.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have some questions on this one, and I should've asked this ahead of time. What, what does this have in relation to the stormwater plan that we have, that we're still considering?
Okay, so we've got two issues here. We've got this, I assume you're asking about the utility, the stormwater utility.
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about two different things, and I think really the best way to describe it in the easiest terms possible is a pre-development versus post-development. I think your utility, and we'll go through this through a workshop, but we, when you're paying for a stormwater utility, you are paying for your exist, your impact on the water system from your household or your business or whatever, post-construction and post-development. What this largely does is actually gets to a point where we're increasing our requirements on development standards, et cetera, before you get to a building. Does that make sense? So we're talking, this is, this is where we addressed, yes, there's two different things.
We're just increasing our standards.
Yeah, we're talking about the clear-cutting type stuff, and, and fines and fees and for violations, et cetera. That's this one.
Right.
Utility's something completely different.
Right. There is, is, well, I think that alleviates my question, so I'm good with it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Number five, council to consider approving a lien collection agreement with the city of York.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Number six, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to provide for the re-issuance Number six, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to provide for the reissuance of a non-exclusive franchise to Carolina Water Service, Inc., for the operation of water and sewer systems within a certain defined territory in York County, South Carolina. To provide for the term and geographical area of such franchise, to prescribe and regulate the terms and conditions of service, to establish standards and regulations for the operation of such water and sewer systems, to provide for the revocation, cancellation, or reduction of the area of such franchise, to authorize the execution of the franchise agreement with Carolina Water Service, Inc., and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
What is that certain defined territory in York County?
There's a map attached to the agreement that shows the franchise area.
Is this, is this Lake Wylie or is this separate from, is this?
This is the Lake Wylie franchise with Carolina Water Service.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, hearing none. Committee and other reports, economic development, the honorable.
You got two, two matters that were.
Oh, I apologize, I do. Thank you, Kristi.
You're welcome.
I missed it. Recommend, there's a recommendation that council approve ratification of procurement for contracted veterinary services for the animal control department. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion.
Did anybody other than me have questions?
I mean, I don't see, I, I don't like it. I don't think it looks very good, but I don't have a better solution to take care of animals. That's, that's.
I don't like the way it all happened and what it is, but at this point, it's what we need to.
I don't think there's a problem putting light on it, though. Pulling out the consent agenda and talking about it.
So let's, let me shed a little light on it for you.
Yeah.
Okay. So unfortunately, in the, a sign of the times is that people are surrendering dogs, probably more, more than ever, for probably the least reasons ever. It's a, it's a very, it's a very unfortunate thing. So we probably could have planned a little better for, for what, what happened. I look at this and I know that the average cost per animal to spay and neuter and give a rabies shot is $66. So $34,750 is 523 animals. I also know that all those animals weren't spayed, neutered, and given rabies shots. And that's the part that, that's very, that's very, that breaks my heart, quite frankly. We were at a maximum capacity of 350 animals, not a maximum. Our, our capacity is 250 animals. We had 350 animals. And what that means is that we have dogs in kennels that are large enough for one dog and we may have three in that kennel. And so it's just, it's unfortunate all the way around for the animals of York County. As we approach budget season, and the one thing that I would ask, and, and I'm going to ask again and again, so I figured I'd start tonight, is that council, I want to encourage council to make the necessary updates in the size of our animal control facility. There are approximately 240 animals there today, mostly dogs and cats as of this morning. I think there was a pig there also. So, you know, we, we, this is a, it's a service. I look at it as a business and, but I look at it as a business that's very important and I look at it as a business that needs to make money, needs to not make money, but not lose, not pay out. You know, it, contract work always costs you more than it would if we had our own vet. And it concerns me that we hired a part-time vet. I understand it, but it does concern me that we hired a part-time vet because we're not a part-time animal control. We are an overtime animal control. And so my request is going to be going into budget season is that we help fund animal control, that we, that all these fancy buildings that we're building, you know, I'd give one up if I thought that it would help the animals of this county. I'll sit here and let's build something for them. The remedy is not to euthanize more animals, but to grow the animal control facility to meet the needs of the community. And we've, we've worked hard, I've worked hard with county management to do these things and I appreciate all of the effort and I look really hard at it. And I'm going to continue to look really hard at it because it's kind of my little council hobby and that's animal control. So I feel, I feel very strongly about these things and I think that it's never going to be perfect, but it needs to be the best that we can possibly get it in York County. So we do have to pay the vet. It concerns me that we're having to pay a vet so much and that we're, we're over that budget because that's an awful lot of animals in a short period of time. So I just want that to be, I want, I want, I know that, you know, a lot of times you don't want to talk about animal control. You just want that to be working over here. You want that to be a plate that's twirling and that plate is, is wobbling. And so I just, for council members, I, I want your support. Personally, I want your support in helping do some of the right stuff for county, for animal control going forward. So I make the motion that we, the motion's already been made.
Motion's been made. I'm going to add my two cents and then I'll come back to you, Chad, if you don't mind.
You're probably going to do mine.
I'm, I'm more concerned with the process that allow this to get to that point. That how, you know, how we didn't see that our veterinarian might leave and then how we did not see that an overload to just one veterinarian as opposed to spreading it out amongst every veterinarian in the county wasn't possible. How you didn't, I mean, there has to be, it seems to me that, did we create this problem ourselves or did we get hit with a perfect storm? And have we evaluated this so that it can't happen again? This is, you know, $5,800, not going to break the county. It, that is obvious. But it, it's, it's just kind of shows up. I'm just curious, did we have a lack of foresight in this?
I would say it's a combination of the perfect storm and, and we could have done things better. Early on, there could have been more work pushed toward the other vets. In a perfect world, there would have been foresight and that would have been done. We didn't necessarily know how long the, we would not, we would be without a vet. And this particular vet, it's the vet that left and quit, she had no work. So she's there and ready to take on anything we can do. I think she was cheaper than the others as well. So early on in this process, if more work had been channeled towards the other vets, it would have never come before y'all like this. But I will point out that before we spent, you know, we didn't go past that $30,000. We caught it, stopped it and said, before we go past that, it has to go before y'all. So the controls did work and stop us from going out and, you know, paying her more than $30,000 without taking it before y'all, before permission over there. So, you know, the controls worked in the county. There could have been things done better early on. You know, that's why we're here taking the lumps for that now.
We didn't, we didn't pay it.
And just.
Ode. I mean, we, we paid what we could pay, but there's still, there's still a lot, some owed. So we did spend it, but I think that's how I would.
There have been some major changes in animal control over the last year. I mean, there have. In reference to the vet leaving, she decided she wanted to start her own company and then she took several of the people with her and, and so.
And then we paid her a significant amount.
And I'm, I'm going to talk about that. She was not our first choice and we actually, if my briefing was correct, we had other vets that were thinking about it. And one of them actually did it and basically contacted us and said, because of rumors and propaganda about them killing dogs, they weren't going to work with us anymore. Did I get that right, David?
They didn't want to perform euthanasia.
Yeah.
We had two other veterinary clinics that we also created purchase orders with. But due to them being an established business, they didn't have the, the staff there to handle the volume that, that we needed at the time, as Allison said. We had over, over 350 animals in the shelter at the time. So it was a perfect storm, as, as Michael said.
And if, you know, and Allison's right, you know, if you want, and is, let me explain something. There is no such thing as a complete no-kill shelter. I mean, if you have a dog that is brought in there and has been beaten up and is dying and there's no way you can save it without leaving it in a painful life, you have to put it to sleep. I, I mean, that's just what's best for the animal. And, but our goal is to get as close to possible to be in a no-kill shelter and, and working with the different volunteer agencies to get as many of those animals adopted out as possible. But with the number of, of the sheer volume of animals that are coming in, I mean, to do that, we probably will have to expand and get bigger. I mean, that, you know, that, and that's going to be a choice that the council's going to have to make.
I'm going to go to Mr. Williams and back to you, Ms. Roddy.
Yeah, that was the point that I wanted to make, that it was the vet that, that, that what did work for us. I believe she was our first full-time vet. We, we had a part-time vet and we had contracted before and then we hired her full-time and then she decided to, to go off, I believe. And, and so the part-time, might be trying to return back to it, but, but yeah, the, the volume we, we got with what we're, the way we're trying to do things now probably is too much for a part-time.
And we, and we are looking at full-time, we, and we are looking at more than one volunteer or one part-time, excuse me. I mean, so we haven't stopped with just this one.
I guess the, this probably didn't go through the, through the procurement process either. I would imagine they didn't submit a bid for, for work. We just had some agreements because of.
We did.
There wasn't a time to do an RFQ, but that might.
We did receive quotes from three veterinary clinics.
Okay, good, 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 good.
One thing about, one thing about the quotes is this same vet is running a current special that's cheaper. Now, let me tell you, when somebody walks in with one or two animals and they need that and they want to charge them, you know, $60, that's one thing. But when we walk in with, you know, 500 and something animals over a short period of time, we should be getting the lowest rate ever advertised by that vet. And we are, we're a little off that because they're advertising a special now. That, our average is $66 and they're, they're advertising a considerably lower rates now on their, on their page. So, you know, if we're going to, if we are going to take that many animals to be euthanized or to be spayed and neutered and have rabies shots to any vet, we should be guaranteed that we are not paying what I call government prices. We should be getting, we should be getting very good prices on that because that's a, that's a big quantity discount, in my opinion.
Mr. Roddy.
I'll, I'll hold my comment. I was actually going to just comment about the, the sheer number that we're housing from 250 to 350, but this, this has nothing to do with the, the full-time bid or the part-time bid.
Anybody? I, I just, I want to make sure, because my, I asked a question and it kind of got answered, but I want to make sure, I want to make sure that there is a process currently that has now been implemented so that this could not happen. And I don't mean that the bill gets up, but I, that I mean that we can more evenly spread out the work amongst a broader group of veterinarians and not have this type of issue occur again.
We are currently doing that.
Yes, that, that is the goal.
And if I could share one more item, since council approved the resolution, I think it's probably been six months ago where you allowed us to run specials on cats and dogs, maybe at reduced rates. Our save rate has gone up, I think Eric told me, yeah, to 76%, 75 to 76%. So it's, it's gone up quite a bit from probably in the mid-40s to 50%, up to 75, 76%. And we do want to get to that 90%. That's the goal, to get to 90%. And that's the, the no-kill goal, the no-kill coalition in South Carolina.
David, am I, am I correct in saying that almost, almost 50% of the animals were owner surrenders?
We have a lot of owner surrenders. I think last year alone, we had out of 5,500 animals roughly that came in. Over 2,000 were owner surrenders. So that's a significant, and we're, what we're looking at doing is going to managed intake on that where you, we require an appointment for somebody to bring in, bring in an animal and release it to York County.
I would request that we have a follow-up at the next meeting with the process and procedure that we're going to have in place in order to avoid this because to pay someone to clean up a mess that they created because they left and we're putting that on the taxpayers' dime, that bothers me, especially when it seems that we could have foreseen what was happening with this departure of this vet. I mean, that is, to me, it's, it's awful. And there needs to be something at the next meeting that establishes some sort of policy or procedure that shows that it's not going to happen again.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, hearing none. And then what has now been moved to new, was item number?
Eight. It was 38 now.
38, council to approve a request by the Public Works Department to extend a temporary public service use located on tax map 736-0000014.
I'm going to move to approve, but I like discussion.
Second.
Any discussion?
The reason why I asked for us to discuss this, this was on consent agenda and while I love to move a, a, a meeting along and we're way far beyond what we thought this would be, I think it's important to point out one thing. We told the folks in Fort Mill that we were going to be opening up this facility, I think this summer. That we put it on a sign, this is the second time we've told them that it wasn't the right date. And then what, from reading between the lines on this request, which we obviously have to extend the public use in order to keep the recycling center open, I learned from asking questions that we are now not going to meet yet the, the newest date that we set for ourselves in terms of opening that facility. And I think it's real, we need to be real careful when we do consent agenda that if there's something that is, that's going off path of what we've done before or that's off the, the timeline that we promised to the public, that needs not to be under consent agenda. That needs to be brought before the council so that we know it and that we can take action to make sure that the public is aware of that. I just don't, I really just don't understand why it's going to take us two years to get a dump. We're going to have the family court done before we get this dump facility done. And I just would really like some input and communication and I need to be able to explain this to the folks when, when they come to me and ask me why it's not open and why the sign's not right.
Is this a temp site or is this a new permanent site?
We have to extend the temp site because the permanent site is not ready.
Right.
It won't be ready.
I, I can address that, unfortunately, that is the reality of it. What has happened is we hired a consultant in December to do the design and construction administration. First part of design was to get in there, look at it, do a preliminary design. What they identified was a very small portion of wetlands that bisected the property in the, right in the middle of the usable area. With that, they had to hire a subconsultant to come in. That delayed it by that being an out-of-scope part of the project. And then further, that consultant identified it, delineated it, and then was giving us options on how to proceed. Had a full intent, once those options were given to us, to come back to with an updated schedule. And that's what I requested from our consultant, which I have not gotten yet. But I understand as of yesterday, there is now a plan on how to mitigate that wetland issue. So now I'm waiting for that updated schedule, so.
Would it be helpful for us to have Cummings look at this or to, I just don't, I don't know what would be, what would help drive this? It just seems like it's taking a long amount of time, a lot longer than it takes for us to do some of these other bigger projects. I'm asking for your input to help make this.
We can talk with them. I'm not sure that it'll help at this point, but we can definitely talk to them. In hindsight, I wish we would have done this project a little differently, but.
Absolutely.
Mr. Roddy.
Do we not have any, any information on a, a wetlands being on this property before we purchased it to?
We had a phase one done, but that was not identified. Again, it's a less than .2 acres. It's a very thin strip. It was identified under further investigation. Unfortunately, it's just in the worst area. But the mitigation effort, mitigation credits can be bought, can't be in that area because there aren't any. So we would have to mitigate on-site. So the, the mitigation, the approach we're taking now is to limit mitigation to less than .1 acres and therefore we no longer have to mitigate, but we are going to lose a little chunk of the usable area.
When did it become, when, when did staff become aware that the timeline was going to change?
That would have been just, just right after Christmas is when I got the notification of the wetland.
Just from my standpoint, when we say we're going to open on June 30, whatever the date is, June 30, and we're all of a sudden not, I think telling council we're not as quickly as possible, and you can do that in an email, that doesn't require a meeting like this to tell us, hey, this isn't going to happen. Then when you bring this up, we don't potentially pull it off consent agenda because we've talked about it and we, and it's out there. I think that's really the problem here is, is how, you know, this communication between staff and council and how you relay this information to us quickly enough that we can digest it and determine, and figure it out. I mean, it's insane that we've bought a piece of property that we may not be able to use. That, I feel like I'm on a merry-go-round and I can see the course in front of me and I can't figure out why I'm getting ahead, not getting ahead of it. I mean, this, this, at a certain point, this, it just, it, it becomes comical. But certainly knowing this information upfront and knowing this, you know, in the week before the new year, I mean, today's only the, the 16th, I guess it's only been 18, 20 days. But the sooner you know this, especially for Ms. Cox, this is her district. She gets, I know she gets phone calls about it. I get it, it's not even my district. So, I mean, this, this is important stuff. If y'all could please give us a new timeline, as, you know, within a day or two of you knowing the timeline, please get that to us so we can tell our, tell the people.
And if I could say, just in defense of staff, we did cancel the first meeting for this month, but they probably could have told us that.
We did, we did.
Well, I think that was the only question that I had is that it was, I had to find, I had to dig for that. I mean, this was a consent agenda item, let's, let's push this back beyond a year. And so I'm having to ask all these questions and then it creates a problem. So just give me the bad first and I'm.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Now back to committee and other reports, economic development, Mr. Winkler.
All right, economic development committee met on January 12 at noon. Mr. Williams and myself were present. We discussed a extension request to, actually to two fee and lieu agreements. We discussed those in executive session a little further. We took no action, but other than to ask our economic development director to put some numbers together, to put before everyone so that we'd understand better exactly what it is they're asking for. We also discussed the idea for a possible economic development closing fund, which is something that Department of Commerce is apparently looking at in areas where a fee and lieu of cannot be done. For example, some areas of Fort Mill, I believe there's, or areas where there's been. Can't believe I'm drawing a blank on this, Chad, help me out.
It's the.
The TIF.
TIF district, yeah.
We can't do a fee and lieu of in a TIF where we don't collect any taxes or above that amount. And so Commerce has said to look for, look at other ideas in those areas. So we discussed that. We also discussed the Gatsby reporting that was talked about tonight as far as fee and lieu of and what difference that makes with collections. And also got an update on the East York Bank Building. An issue we've had with that is where the retention pond is placed and the fact that you can't respond. that is where the retention pond is placed, and the fact that you can't respond, expand a building when there's a retention pond right up against it, and so David has done some work and found some grant money to help with that from Columbia, and they're in the process of working on.
And they voted to approve it in the consent agenda.
Yeah. And so, uh, other than that, as I said, we, um, discussed some requests in executive session, but did not take any actions coming out of that, and so, uh, did I cover it all, Mr. Williams?
Least part I was awake for. No, it sounds right. All the good members were there.
Yep.
All the good committee members were there.
Who we got missing?
Okay. I, I was absent, thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met today at five o'clock, and all the good members of that committee were at that meeting, and the Lake Wylie Marine, we had, we considered applications, and we approved, uh, Debbie Chacharon for the Lake Wylie Marine Commission, Annie Williams for the Board of Assessment Appeals, and Michael Drummond for the York County Natural Gas Board, um, we then had a review of numerous boards, um, and it was amazing the amount of applications that, that were given to us, um, where in the past, we've had a problem getting people to update their applications, once we notified them in writing that if they didn't do it, they would be removed from the board in thirty days, it, we've had much better participation, and we appreciate everyone doing that, we also received a, a small finance update, uh, which was identical to what you heard tonight. Do you want to talk? Oh, yeah, and we are, we are getting a seventy thousand dollar, um, net from P Cards, and that, and that is actually even smaller than what we could have done, but we, we, um, we, we were, we played good neighbors with our friends in Rock Hill, so. Council member knew non-agenda comments, anyone?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler?
Just wanna let, um, council know, oh, a few meetings back, we voted, um, on the Veterans Park and to implement an advisory committee, once that land was in county, um, name, and so I've been working to, I've got five persons that are interested, um, and so at this time, I'm gonna request a formal gen, agenda item be put on the February fifth meeting, to authorize the establishment of an ad hoc committee, um, with consideration of the five people who I'll mention in just a minute, on an interim basis, um, and those five would serve an interim basis until the ordinance is approved and formal advisory committee is vetted by Finance and Operations, um, and I believe a first reading of some sort will be on that February meeting for, for that ordinance, for that committee, and just to let you know, um, what I'm suggesting for the ad hoc committee, at least at this point, are, um, two veterans from the western side of the county, John J. Maddenley and Ronnie Taylor, um, one veteran from the eastern side of the county, Robert Sweet, a private citizen from the eastern side of the county, Patricia Mickle, and one York City council member, since the property is in the city limits of York, um, and, so that's, uh, the five that I'm proposing for the ad hoc committee that'll be before council next meeting.
Any other?
Yes, um, just wanted to, um, let council know, and my fellow zoning committee members also, that, um, we will be, um, meeting with staff to discuss the growth issues in Lake Wylie and Clover area as it relates to the USB, um, and we will, um, ask for some solutions and request recommendations from staff, also will, um, consider, um, having legal counsel present at all planning commission meetings.
And that'll be done in committee?
Yes.
All right.
I just need to announce that, staff has asked for the Justice and Public Safety Committee to meet sometime, um, in the next month, to, um, start discussions about the east, eastern booking facility, and just to let you all know, if you have an issue with that, we're gonna try and set that up.
One last thing, and we'll end this, I wanna put everyone on notice that I have called for a special call meeting to happen on Friday, January the nineteenth, um, at the Anna K. Hubbard Fire Training Center, it will happen no earlier than four-thirty, but it will basically happen at, immediately at the end, the conclusion of our council workshop, which starts at three that day, three o'clock that afternoon.
Three or two?
Two, it's on my calendar for two, um, also, I wanna say Chairman Blackwell, I, I spoke with him today, he is recovering from his heart surgery, and he intends to return on February fifth, our fearless leader will be back, and last but not least, I find when there are, when, when bad things happen anywhere, the news cycle comes and goes, and we forget about it, um, and who, what's left are the families of, of people who don't forget about it, and these officers who were shot, um, their families, and, and they are not going to forget about that, and I think it's something, a, a, as a council, we need, we, and as a staff, and, and as a county, we need to do everything we can to remember this, not today, because today they have tons of support, but remember this three months from now, when a lot of that support is gone, and anything that we can do to help them and their families, I, I would hope we would do that. All right. Any citizen concerns? No, no? Do I have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. I move we go into executive session to receive legal advice regarding the Palm Creek Cove two road drainage conditions, receive legal advice regarding condemnation of project number zero-zero-four-two-three-two-five, tract forty-five B, uh, project number one-five-two-two-two, tract number two-twelve, and condemnation of engineering project number zero-nine-one-zero-eight, also to receive legal advice regarding the, uh, Carolina Water Service contract and the system options, receive legal advice on nineteen-twenty Gold Hill Road, uh, parcel number six-five-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-two-two-one enforcement options, and to discuss a personnel matter involving the Assistant Planning Director.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will return and go into executive session at eight o'clock. We are back out of executive session, are there any motions?
Yes, sir, I move we authorize settlement, uh, as discussed on, uh, project number zero-zero-four-two-three-two-five, tract forty-five B.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other motions?
Yes, sir, I move that we, um, authorize settlement offer during mediation up to the limit discussed during executive session regarding engineering project number zero-nine-one-zero-eight.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, hearing none, next motion.
Yeah, I, I move that we condemn project number one-five-two-two-two, tract number two-twelve.
Second.
Authorized condemnation.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other motions?
I'm good.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.